I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone online and those present. Start with the agenda confirmation. We have one addition. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
One addition to the sheriff's agenda, and that will be an amendment to purchase equipment, an amendment to a prior purchase agreement. Anything else? Anyone have? Right, entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Erica.
I'll second that motion.
By Dave. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Minutes? Anyone have any? I think there is a typo on page two of five county. It just forgot the N in county law library. First line.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, that was the one.
And then the only other thing is, and this I'll have to clarify with the motion maker was John and the second was Erica on land use on page four of five. We set the mile or we set the per diem rate of forty dollars for the rack committee and rate of mileage, but did we say rate at point six five? Or did we, did we say or mean the IRS rate?
Just read IRS rate.
Yeah.
I believe that's what we said.
Yeah.
Right. So I thought we could just clarify that as the IRS, the current rate. That was all I, anyone have anything else?
So in page three of five, under humans resources, number one, the first bullet. Should, should we, should we explain why we did that? Should we like put the time period in there or is that not important? Like it's, it's not six months, it's a year. Does that make sense? So like, like to include bailiff to, to the language, the language say, so, because all of our other employees are six months on probation except for the sheriff's department, they're on the year probation and we're including the bailiff to a year.
So like same motion and second to approve probation period for up to one year for the sheriff's department?
Yeah. That's right. Does that make sense? It'll stay in the policy, so we don't need to put it in there. Okay. Yeah, I didn't, yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's all I had. Plus, and then that type one.
Okay. Anyone else? Entertain a motion to approve with those corrections. John?
I'll second.
Second by Erica. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Open forum? Nate, anyone on open forum? You know, we, I don't know, we haven't even, I haven't even thought about it before, but we should probably acknowledge online if there's anyone on open forum. You know, I guess you never thought of that before. So is there anyone online that, I know a lot of employees online, but is there anyone online that wishes to speak at open forum? I don't, there's a couple that aren't named, I don't, I think, but are you, are they unmuted right now? We better unmute them if we, otherwise we won't know. Okay. I don't hear anyone online that wants open forum. So we'll go to reports and correspondence. Anyone wish to start?
I can go first. I just had a couple of meetings. I had the opioid settlement group. We are currently accepting RFPs. We extended the RFP period because we have not received very many. So just putting that out there, the application is on the Becker County webpage. And then we had human services, which everything's pretty much on the agenda. One thing is the child protection unit passed their ICWA audit. They were one of four counties in Minnesota. They got 100%.
Third percent, yes.
And that's, knowing how, how much work that, that takes, I think that's a huge accomplishment for that team and that that audit is connected to funding. So if they wouldn't have got 100%, they would have not got the full funding amount. So just a shout out to that unit for doing a very good job.
I think, yeah, make sure we express our thanks and appreciation because that is a big task, like, like so many big tasks that our employees do that we kind of take for granted how much work is put into the highway, the audit, and I mean, those are significant. So a big shout out to them and thank you very much.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And that was all I had. Well, and we, Dave and I attended the
Joint governance.
AMC 201.
201, yeah.
Yeah. And that was very informational.
Yeah, it was good. They, I'll just say, they had four topics, talked about constituent outreach, building relationships. And then this one, I actually learned a lot in what would human service, human resources do. They had situations where they explained, explained like, like this person, did this person, what, what do you do? How do you do it? It was actually really good. Yeah. And then they had tips and best practices for compliance and data requests. That was very informational. I think I might have had a little trouble staying awake then. And then the last one was managing board.
Andy, this is Amanda calling you back from HR. I did look at the strange post on there.
And then managing board meetings in polarized times. That was really good too. So interesting. So yeah, it was good. If I just keep going. I'm on a roll. All right. So John and I had a recreation advisory committee meeting. There's a lot, there's a lot happening at Dutton Locks. The tram, you, I can, you can do, take care of that if you want and then, but anyway, the shelter is, you know, we talked about they had found some, maybe some archaeological stuff. So they're, they're, they can move, we can move to a phase two, but unfortunately it's cost money, like maybe up to 20,000. So we don't, we aren't really in favor of that, but the state's going to make a recommendation of what they've, of the findings. And then another option would be to tear down the old shelter and build a new one right on top of it. So.
I think we're getting closer to that spot.
I think so, yeah. I think we're getting closer to that. And then the part, project four 12 would like to have, and, and the guy doing it would like to have a troll put out. It would be right across, it would be to the west, no, east side of the, of the parking lot, right? Isn't it east or northeast?
That would be my understanding. They want it south of where the tram is.
Oh, yeah, south of the tram. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And they would, they would, and they'll, and you can see.
That'd be a good spot for it too.
Yeah. And they're, and they're gonna, they, and then they would be in charge of basically making sure that it's, it's maintained and the trail that to it is cleared and so forth, so people could see it.
That's viewed from Sally?
Yep.
So John, do you think you're going to pose for it or?
That'd be a little larger than me.
And then we talked about a bike path. So Matt Birkey from WeFest came in and he is in support of allowing a path to come through their property. And hopefully maybe we can even get a path going from Dutton Locks to Bucks Mills. And there's a, what was the name of that company that did the study for WeFest that was named that?
Well, Apex.
Apex.
Doing some work out.
Yeah, they're doing some work out there.
Where things would lay and.
Yeah. And so they might be able to do a, help maybe do a study.
Be nice if you could loop that somewhere, Bucks Mills over to Shoreham and then come back.
That's, yeah.
Honestly, go towards the golf course, utilizing probably a little bit of township roads. You can either go west to Shoreham or down 17 to Bucks Mills.
To Bucks Mills. Come back, yeah.
Which most people ride around that lake.
To try to stay off highway 59.
Yeah. Well, yeah, that.
And then they also want to have a, and then, and Bucks, and then we also talked about, or the partnership for health will, will pay, will probably help pay for the studies. I think Pat, what was his?
Steve was going to go.
Yeah, Steve was going to talk to him and I, because they had, they had stated in our other meeting, our, our, or the trail meeting that they wanted to do, do more of those things. So. Did you want, did you want to talk about tram or?
Well, it wasn't much. It was just a little update and there was even talk of reopening it with a little additional rain, but we decided yesterday leave it closed and hopefully pull some rails out here late summer and just get it in better working order for next year. And I haven't had calls complaining that it's closed because I think everybody realizes we got low water. A lot of boats and pontoons have come out of the lake. So.
Yeah.
It would have got what Brecker and Jerry got four, four and a half inches or wherever. Sunday's rain was about, I had about 10th.
Then also Bucks Mills now, the county now owns that 1.6 acres and they're, they'll be putting that six foot chain link fence up on the property line pretty soon. There's a tour out there. Is it Thursday?
Yes.
Buffalo Red?
Yeah.
Joint. No, joint powers.
Joint power, joint powers, yeah. 10, it's at, I think it's at 10. 10 to noon, maybe. And then Eagle Lake Access, that's all.
Yeah, I stopped in to meet with all of the persons. There's actually three people, I think, that purchased it for the Lake Association. I was going to talk to one of them and he was out, so touch base with him and just see what their complete plans are and what it's have. Concern is that it stays public.
Yeah.
So we'll stay on top of that.
And then you got to, you got to, there's a deal at Wanting and Park tonight too. Yeah.
Yeah, there's a special invite for little presentation. I think at seven, six or seven tonight out there. Run down to that and see, but.
And then the next thing that Jim Olson gave an update on Hartland Trail, so I'll just go right in. John and I had a Hartland Trail meeting too. So the capital investment committee will be having a hearing dinner presentations tonight at 7:30, from 7:30 to 8:30 at Tech School. Or it's not the Tech School, no, it's Moorhead, whatever they call that place. I probably shouldn't say that. Them state, yeah. So the, and what they do is, is Jim and Dan will be giving a presentation about 10 minutes long. And they'll, I think they'll have three or four presentations while they're having dinner about our bonding and we're asking for 1.8 million dollars, which will cover Moorhead to Holly, Osage to Park Rapids and a study from DL to Holly and Fraser to Wanting and Park. So hopefully we get that. That's pretty big.
Dan is from MetroCog.
Yeah.
And he was doing a presentation, that was yesterday in Moorhead or separate one?
Separate one. I think it's, I think it was yesterday in Moorhead, yeah.
And then he agreed that being he was doing that presentation just to change ours down here a little bit with Jim's helping and present for, for Hartland Trail portion here too.
Yeah, I think that was about it. Though there is another, there's a MetroCog bus tour on September 15th. And, and Dan's going to take care of that too, because it starts in Moorhead. So he's going to talk. It is.
Yeah, hopefully on the last segment from the bridge that goes nowhere to Fraser U and get probably bids out in December. So they'll hang up on some right away issues. So they're working through that.
And then I had, I got, I just got one more and then I'm done. I had a fair board meeting. We talked, it was, it was after the fair meeting and we talked, it just went through a list of things that went good, things that need to get better. So they, they really got going on that. And the one thing that did come out, and I'll mention it to Steve too, Steve Skugai didn't get to talk to me yet, but they need another dumpster in the grandstand area. Oh boy, was that a mess in there. So they got, well, they had the regular dumpster that they probably will need another one there too. And they can bring it right away, put in the grandstand area. That's no problem at all. Because there was a lot of, a lot of trash that had moved around. Yeah, that's it. That's all I have.
John, I had sheriff's, sheriff's committee. Most of it's on the, on the, well, if it's not on today, it's coming up soon, but talked about some of the wish lists on purchase ideals. You know, they've got just under a million dollars in, in monies from the, is that state and just state monies, I think? There was no federals. So we talked about portal, portable radio needs throughout the county with, with sheriff, not only sheriffs, but EMS and fire departments. Talked a little bit about some, no, there's some things in there probably just don't want to discuss publicly, but you know, there's some needs that for, in the sheriff's department that will come up and also discuss future recognition of some employees. Got the boat purchase, that, that resolution, that's on our agenda. We did, they did some repairs on the impound lot in the building, so that's a little bit more waterproof than it was before. And anything else on that you wanted?
We had a discussion on the active control contracts for the jail, but we're, a little more information before decide which way to go on that, but it's a
Yeah, it's a jail.
Ongoing maintenance for cameras and all electrical stuff out there.
Yeah, it's now, it's, it's not brand new anymore. So we're going to have to maintain, get a little bit maintenance, maintenance requirements, you know, ongoing. So we want to make sure that there's a, no hiccups as we move forward and especially video and audio, you know, some of the security things. So. Other than that, I think that was my only meeting besides finance and.
Yeah, that's about all I had. Everything else been covered.
We did have, we do have Corment, Corment days coming up in, down in Corment this weekend. So it'll be busy. Looks like it's going to be a hot one.
You in the wrestling matches?
I'm not. I, I, I don't know if I'm going to be gone this weekend for, I'm going to be fishing up in Alaska, so I will.
Looking forward to watching them.
Yeah. You know, when we were at the fair this year, I do, do remember years ago, and I don't know, John, if you were commissioner then, but years ago, one of the nights was commissioners ride in donkey races. So.
I remember that because I went to. I remember Larry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that too.
We were riding donkeys and I, and I just kind of smirked. I don't think there are many people, it didn't attract too many people, but it was, it was memorable for those of us on the backside of a donkey. That's right here.
I'm sure I paid big money to see that, but I'm sorry.
I got a good one. That didn't, it bucked a little bit, but not too bad. But there's people flying. The good old days. So. Anything other, other reports or correspondence? We have AMC coming up in September. Encourage everyone to go to that. That's some good, it's good to get, good to be involved and you can, you can get those contacts and you get to know the, the state people in. The commissioners are, you know, usually not there, but you, you start getting in that, those circles of people that you can have those conversations with the commissioners and. Anything else? Reports, correspondence?
Well, that's all I have.
Appointments?
Commissioner Nelson, we were just going to offer that we have advertised for the rack committee. And so we expect to bring anyone that's responded to the board meeting in September.
Okay, for a large. I do want to make a correction or Abby Anderson would rather be an alternate and she, and so I got a call from Keith Zacharison. So Keith Zacharison will be the, the main person on the rack committee. I talked to him instead of Abby. Abby is kind of withdrawn and rather be the back person rather. She's quite busy. So. I'll make that motion to a point. Keith Zacharison in place of Abby Anderson.
So you're going.
For the rack. Okay. Any other discussion? I've got his email that I can send to you also. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to reports, county administrator.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Nelson. I'm handing this out just as a last minute because we just got an email about this yesterday, but as more legislative funding comes in, and we've already given an overview to the board about the 2.3 million that we're receiving, this just came in with regards to more information on both the state affordable housing aid and then also the, the legislative aid relating homelessness. Actually, this was also talked about during the human services committee meeting a little bit about what it could be used for and what the potential is. It's, not only is human services discussing and reviewing it, but the economic development authority is discussing and review it. And since Commissioner Jepson's on both, that'll be very helpful. But I think our goal here is just to inform the board. If you go sort of the backend, it, it talks about the actual statewide affordable housing aid and what's been certified for the county. So that's what we're waiting for as this aid comes in is we've, we've seen the early numbers, but we actually are looking for the certified documents. And, and what we like about what's listed for both the homeless prevention aid and also the state affordable aid is there are some items where they could collaboratively work together, especially with housing development. And I think at the human services committee, what was talked about is what are the gaps that we have? What, what role do we play right now? And let's say if someone is on the verge of being homeless and, and right now, what the human services department can do is provide, I think, a month's worth of rental assistance. But I think the challenge would be, is what happens if they're three months behind, you know, and, and how do you address that? So, so we're doing a top, bottom review of all the nonprofit groups. What are the gaps? And then looking at sort of short-term needs and then midterm and long-term, long-term beating, meaning providing housing that could be available for individuals to meet their, their funding requirements and things like that. So, so as this comes in, I'll just hand it out and send it to you or email it to you. But I just got this from the human services director just late yesterday. So I thought I would just print it out and get it to you.
And just, just a little bit about that, Pat, one of the things we talked about is really kind of our approach now is really a Band-Aid approach. It's more, we have families in crisis mode. So what can we do to get, keep them in homes? When really the bigger problem is the lack of affordable housing. So that's one of the things that we want to look at is what can we do to bring more affordable housing to kind of alleviate the crisis in the county instead of just putting a Band-Aid on it. So just wanted to add that. Thank you.
I'll just continue on, Commissioner Nelson. I've been invited to come, go to the Pelican River watershed meeting tomorrow morning. So I will attend that. Just introduce myself to the board. We are working with their staff and our staff to have meetings and talk about better collaboration with each other and, and that will be subsequent meetings in the future. We did get a request from the historic society from the executive director is, since we are on the subject of the transit building is they were looking at possible opportunities for a haunted house in October. And would the, would the board, if the board is still owning the building, consider the transit building as a, as a possible haunted house?
Didn't they used to do that in the?
They do it, they use, they usually do it in that four inch building next to it.
Okay.
I, we, I talked to Becky a little bit on the phone and we're going to talk about it. We have a historical site meeting tonight. So we're going to talk about it tonight.
Super.
Okay. I'll, I can report that back to you pretty quickly.
But I think if, I think they want to make plans. So I think we should make a decision today if it's doable that whether we want it or not. And I've been through the haunted house and it's, it's a really good experience. It's fun for the kids and so I, there's nothing in there, I think. And they, they clean up and it's, it's if it's, if they use it and put it back to the state it was, I think that we should say that's, that's acceptable.
Yeah, it's still, still a colony. It's not turned over to the board or anything. That's, I'm, I was.
I think fair board, fair board be on board too. I mean, it's a good community project and fundraiser for them.
So do we need a motion?
I'll make, I'll make, I'll make that motion to if they, if the historical site decides to allow them to use the transit building for their haunted house.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, this isn't necessarily just telling them they have to. It's, it's one of the, it's an option for them to allow them if they feel that's their best need. So.
And just a couple of other things under report. As you may have recalled, last year in 2022, we funded CPR training. That was the use of AEDs. And those are two-year trainings. And so by far, we had a real good response. It was funded by special general dollars, but human services reached out and they have a real small group, about 12 to 14 individuals that is, their, their training is expiring because they didn't take it last year. And so we are looking at the idea, the concept of doing some additional training for that group. Highway, the highway building department kind of takes care of their own needs. Obviously the sheriff office does their own training. So it isn't required for human services personnel to have that type of training, but I think they feel it's important and I think we do as well. And, and so it seems like a very modest investment and I was looking for support from the board in, in some defined training. And we would, we would bring in someone like Safe for Sure who's done it in the past, but wouldn't be a large group. I think last time we did it was, I think we had 50 or 60 people, you know, that took advantage of it. This, they've documented about 12 to 14 individuals, one class essentially.
What's the price?
The, I wanted, I didn't want to reach out to Safe for Sure until at least the board was open to the concept and I could reach out to them and come back to you with an estimate.
Yeah, I'd like to see a dollar amount and then.
I would also wonder if there's grants out there to pay for that.
Right. Well, and we did have a history, the sheriff can certainly echo this, where we had onsite training for a time where we had someone certified in that as well. And so we'll look at some options. I just thought I'd let you know that that inquiry came to my attention. And then finally, and just, I'm looking just for some guidance. Of course, we have Association of Minnesota Counties that helps us from a state legislative standpoint where all the counties can buy on, buy in on certain bills. NACO, of course, does that at the federal level. But I was wondering if the board would be open to the idea of developing a county legislative platform for this next year? That would be specifically items that are important to Becker County, but may not have an interest or a driving force with other counties. And it might be a, a building project or something like that. And we are getting a lot of inquiries from our elected officials to have meetings. And I certainly entertain and have those meetings, but I figure there might be commissioners that might also be interested in being a part of those meetings. We have two federal congressmen that cover Becker County now, Congressman Fishbach and Congressman Staber. And then we have, you're certainly stating and reps and senators. So the idea of a legislative platform certainly is done many times by other counties and it would be specific to things that NACO and AMC couldn't maybe, maybe gather around and, and really start having these federal state legislators start authoring bills for us. And it may require testifying for maybe county commissioners or staff. But I wanted, before I move forward on something like that, I'd like to get some feedback from the board if you're supportive of that.
What would an example?
An example would be some of our expansions at the, at the recycling, we've done that. Another example, that future example would be if we had a need to remodel the old jail space. If we can identify something that, that we could get behind it. I don't think we can, it's not very saleable when you don't have a purpose for it. We want money to remodel. We don't know what we want it to be. But if there is a, something like that, it's a, like the, the city of Dilworth was very successful and got some funding for their fire department.
Sure.
If we wanted to throw something on there right now, we've got federal money for roads or we've got, another option would be the impound lot.
Impound building out there.
So.
Yeah, I mean, I think if, if we have, if we have things that we can do, I think it's a great idea.
Yep.
I think what really is the key on some of that is the benefit, I mean, like to the benefit to the community, benefit to the state, you know, like the, the recycling was, was one of those that can get funding pretty good. So if we want to do any more expansion at the, at there, I think would be a real good show to, show regional benefits rather than just real local. Has better chance of getting. Has better chance of getting funding.
Could I ask Commissioner Nelson, would the commissioners like to be, like to have two commissioners assigned, let's say a legislative committee? What would, what would be the best approach in your mind as a board?
I think we just pop some ideas together and I don't think it, anyone has any thoughts or any departments, you know, the department heads are probably the ones that have the best idea what, what, what's what we could shoot for. The other thing would be like the Wantagen Park, you know, we could, you know, show our support for that to get.
Because I think they got some funding from the legislation last year, didn't they? Wantagen Park? Or they were.
Every year we apply for bond money and yes.
Well, yeah, in a way they did, it wasn't through the legislators, through DNR.
Oh, sure.
They got money to purchase, but that eventually paid back.
Okay, gotcha.
Well, good, I will, I'll, next department meeting, I'll review.
Yeah, I just put it, put it as a continuing.
And if we get a need for committee, we could discuss.
Very good. That's everything I had under report, and I just have some other items to continue with, with your permission.
Sure.
Safe for Sure agreement, page 10 starts, this is an agreement we'd get each year from Safe for Sure. They provide a lot of services. It's, it's on there, page 11 of the agreement. But they provide us the online safety training for all new employees and annually of what employees participate in, so aware, right to know, bloodborne pathogens, ergonomics, emergency action plan. They provide us guidance on OSHA. Beginning this week, they're going to do an OSHA review of all our buildings. So they basically walk through the building like they are OSHA to identify deficiencies. And then we update those working with the department head and facilities. They give us guidance on our safety committee and, and also any grants and things like that moving forward. Much of the training is online, but there is in person training that they do have with the highway department. So, so their contract is up, and so we're asking for the board to consider that contract. It's in the amount of annually for 13,46650. Last year, the amount was 12,35458. So it's a less than a $1,000 or a little more than $1,000 increase from the previous year. And we're looking for authorization for the, for the administrator and the board chair to sign that agreement.
Make a motion to approve the contract that. Or safe and sure, whatever it is here.
I'll second. I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the annual contract with Safe for Sure for the amount of 13,46650. Is this a budget item?
Yes, yes, sir, it is, yep. So I just, I just, oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, you're, go ahead.
Read that, tell you, does that make sense to you?
Is between Becker County?
Between Becker County, is it Detroit?
I think they meant Detroit Lakes.
Detroit Lakes, Becker County, Minnesota, I, or.
I think they just stated.
Like Becker County.
And Detroit Lakes.
The question just is a simple location one, but.
Okay.
I, I think it's.
Fine.
I think they know what it.
They know what it means, I'm sure.
In reason.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
And I can continue?
Yes.
Page 20, Northwest Regional Safety Day, that's in Bemidji. I want to just update the board that both myself and Amanda Paco's are going to be going to that. There's trainings, two trainings each time, and so we wanted to get the most out of it. It's just one day, but the, the training is listed there. A lot of OSHA update training, how to improve safety, you know, injuries in the workplace. Since it is the Northwest Regional One, we wanted to participate in that. It is budgeted for, but I just wanted to, the board to be aware of it. It's not out of state travel, so I don't think we're looking for a motion, but we thought we'd put it on there and let you know what we're involved with.
Looks very interesting.
And then I'll continue on, Commissioner Nelson.
Yes.
Presidential Naco appointment for Commissioner Oakson, this was something the board supported us submitting. Mary McGuire is now the president of Naco. When the, when there's a Minnesota commissioner that's a president of Naco, many times the committee and subcommittee membership is, is populated by Minnesota commissioners. From a Naco standpoint, Minnesota is considered 100% county, and what that means is every county is a member of Naco. Many states aren't that way. And so it gives a lot of weight to the county when we vote for memberships and when they caucus. But in this case, when the president is Minnesota president, you get a lot of benefits. And one of the benefits here is Commissioner Oakson's been nominated on the Transportation Committee as the subcommittee vice chair for the highway and highway safety. And we wanted the board to be aware of that. And certainly, there's some responsibilities that go with that. And there's a legislative conference in DC in 2024 and then a annual conference in July of 2024. And if the board's supportive of it, we would make sure that that's included in the budget from a travel and expense standpoint.
I was reading a little bit more on that yesterday, and all the meetings are pretty much virtual, except for these two are mandatory to attend, so.
John, are those covered through Naco or AMC or?
I haven't got the details on that. You're supposed to be getting a hold of me to.
Because some of the appointments through AMC are supported by AMC or Naco, but they may be.
Some are partially covered and.
They may be.
I find that out, I'll, for, but the reason I wanted to, if I, you know, if I got board support to do it, I'll do it.
Yeah.
If I can't attend the meetings, I'm not going to do it. So it's one of the, right here that the, if you're going to, so.
I think we, we go in this knowing that there will be, there's possibility of expense of those two travel dates for mileage and.
Probably airfare.
Airfare.
Airfare and, and hotel and, and per diem. I would, I mean, we can expect, we can expect John to represent us very well.
Yeah.
And he's, and Mary, Mary Jo's, it's really good to work with Mary Jo and then John and I think have both been on the AMC board when she's been on the board and just outstanding. She'll do Naco a great job. But hopefully, we can, when you're appointed to some of these, maybe you can, we, we always hope that you do best for the nation and the state, but we always hope that there's maybe a little bit that trickles back into, into us locally for, for some of these projects. And I think your knowledge and influence there would is, will be great for the state of Minnesota and Becker County. So I think we should support him and, and appointment to this, we don't appoint him, but support him in acknowledging that this will be a, an expense for the county.
It was kind of honor getting chosen for this one. I did put in for, for caucus one also, but I was told by a fellow commissioner from up north that has been on Naco a lot, he says you'll never get one in transportation.
That's awesome.
Thank you. So I'll make that.
I don't know if we, we, we need a motion to authorize the expense of John or John attending the, being appointed to Naco and.
Well, we're early enough in the budget, we can budget for it, right?
Yes.
So I'll, I'll make that motion to authorize.
Or to support it.
To support, yeah, to support it as a regular committee. We pay for try.
Okay.
How you better say it, yeah.
We have a motion, we have a motion on the floor to, to authorize the expenditure, the expense of John being a member of Naco.
Yep, correct.
That includes, includes mileage or airfare and hotel and per diem.
Mm-hmm.
Hey, we have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Thanks.
Well, congratulations, John. I mean, this, this is a pretty big honor. I mean, and, and I don't, I don't think that Mary Jo could have picked the better commissioner to be on transportation as someone who's spent his entire career working with transportation and being involved at the state level, so.
Thanks.
It's a kudos to you and your, your work in transportation.
Yeah, congratulations.
And Commissioner Nelson will just continue on. Five, six, and seven are more just bringing back to the board. Capital Improvement Plan, as you know, Bruce Kim with Ellos and Associates provided a presentation on the concept of doing a capital improvement plan for the county. Certainly, as our, our, our public funding supervisor of Ellos and Associates, he's very much supportive of the, of the board to consider the concept. From an administration standpoint, it's something I'm really used to in my career and having a capital improvement plan. You know, I think the question was asked is, you know, are we fixing something that isn't broke? And no one is suggesting that the system we have is broke. It's very much focused on department, it's putting together their own plans when they're doing it. What I like about this is it provides ownership to the board where biannually, you're going to be reviewing that five year plan, you're going to be endorsing it. It does give the, our department heads the ability, if something occurs within their operating budget, and like in the case of the sheriff's office in 2022, when they had budgeted for vehicles, vehicles couldn't be produced. And so it's a very easy thing to move that money in a capital improvement plan to the following year, and in the operating budget, it's, it's lost. So I, I want to make sure that if the board does not want to consider this capital plan, we will, we will continue on and be just fine. But it does make things more efficient and it does put on department heads that accountability to start looking out five years, looking at your equipment over 5,000, what needs to be replaced, how are you going to replace it? How are you going to fund it? And it, it, it does allow that type of forecasting. So I'll just leave it at that and send it back to the board.
We did talk about it, Human Services.
Yep.
And Denise was supportive of it. I, overall, I would say I'm supportive of it, pending on how much is it going to cost? That, that's, I guess, what I would like to know is if this is something we're going to look at, what is the cost of having somebody do it for us?
Well, basically, my thought is we don't have to have anybody do it for us. We can do it ourselves, so they're, do it in-house, there's no cost.
Yeah, then, then I think that it's a great plan.
That's where I was going was that, that, I think it's a great budgeting tool and you know where you're going to be hopefully in five years.
And the other thing, Bruce said that, you know, he'll just, you know, if you do, if we do it ourselves, he can help answer questions. And he put, he posed the questions in the slideshow for us.
Yeah.
It's not a complex.
No.
It's not a complex deal, I think, or each department can have a five year plan. And, and even when some things in sheriff's office that we discussed, I think could, you could put in a five year plan or even long, you know, some of those will be longer term. But it's not, and I think those discussions in committee, you can earmark certain things, yeah, this should probably, we should budget this for long term. And I, I think it's.
It's very helpful. I was involved in it for many, many years in highway and five year planning on, on capital purchase, and it's a good planning tool. Not saying that something doesn't happen to something and you got to flip flop a line item, but that's doable.
I do think we should probably have maybe a kind of committee of the whole, we talked about later, we don't call it committee of the whole, we just call it public or a work session, you know, that's what we call it. I think we should have two work sessions a year with all the department heads and going over that, just to say, just to maybe say, you know. And, and not for some of the smaller stuff, but, you know, building projects are farther out than five years too. And I think that's where we would get some work. So maybe we just start with one, come this late fall, once the snow flies or something that we say, you know, let's have a, let's have a work session at after, you know, to to look at five year, every department have their five year plan ready, and we can review it at, at a public works, work session or a committee of the whole session. And then one of our meetings.
I think we should move forward on getting it set up and then, but.
Yeah. Thanks.
And then Mary, that, that would be, that line item would be in the budget and with every department in there, and then that would just continue on. We wouldn't zero that out at the end of the year, is that correct?
Well, there would be a separate fund set up.
Right.
Yes.
So, but it wouldn't zero out at the end of the year because it's an ongoing, like our general fund, just we started zeroing, all, everything goes into reserve, so. That would be, that's kind of the difference that, you know, like the sheriff's car example, we had, you know, that got into, where they didn't come in.
Yeah.
Then we zeroed the budget out, now he's deficit spending on his budget, which he really wasn't because they were from last year's budget. So, so the direction of the board should be department heads, work, work on your five year plan, this, this late fall, we'll, we will have a public or a work, work session and just kind of go through it a little bit. It shouldn't take, I don't think it would take long unless we have some commissioner that starts rambling on a lot.
Yeah, that's.
I don't, I don't know who that, I don't know who that would.
No, I think that is a really good idea. We'll be ahead of things that go wrong.
Well, thank you for the feedback, commissioners. Consent agenda, I get another item where, again, we did the benchmarking on this as well, is, is, you know, putting together on a consent agenda at a future board meeting, items that the board perhaps normally doesn't reviews, you know, through the packet, but doesn't need to have a lot of questions, perhaps it's been vetted through committee, things like that. I mean, that could be somewhat of a moving item and what would be important, you, I would tell you, minutes wouldn't be something we'd put in consent because there's always something that you find that we could change. But there might be items like claims and things like that we could put in there. And this would be a, this would evolve. And I think you'll show us over time with your votes, if you, if, again, if the board supports this, that if you keep and continue to pull something out of consent, well, we'll probably just leave it out and, but there are other items we would keep in. And we're looking at, you know, board efficiency, time efficiency, things like that. And is that something the board would like to consider?
Did we ever investigate if you can do resolutions in a consent agenda?
Right, you know, the question was asked, and, and based on the benchmark we've done, we've seen that pretty typical, you know, across counties where resolutions are in there. And I think in the consent agenda, when you approve it, you're essentially approving that resolution. But I think your point's well taken, Commissioner Myers, the fact that when you approve something that's a resolution, you're quoting the resolution in your motion and things like that, and the consent agenda does do that.
What about renewal of liquor and tobacco licenses?
I've seen that in a number of counties, but I, I also want to make sure, since Mary's involved in that, she has an opportunity to speak about that.
Yeah, no, I realize that one, Mary, though, but this is regular renewals. But if you have a, somebody, a new application, then you got to go through the procedure.
Would the Secretary of State be the one to answer that question? Maybe you want to shoot him a question, maybe you just want to ask a question, we're considering consent, because I'd rather hear it from Secretary of State or someone from the state and make sure we're not.
Do, comply.
So that we're, yeah. And, and ask the general question about resolutions. I mean, because I know a lot of times, you know, these are insignificant, they're not insignificant, but they're very common and pretty rubber stamped things. But at the end of the day, there are some requirements sometimes and a resolution, I do one, I want to make sure that resolutions are okay to do in a consent agenda because, and I know a lot of places do it, but you're fine unless something happens and then you're not fine. So if it's, so.
So Commissioner Nelson made ongoing research.
I mean, I'm fine with that, I just want to make sure that someone from the state says you can do a consent agenda with resolutions in it.
Fair enough, okay.
Good. I mean, otherwise, the consent agenda will, until that happens, let's just not do resolutions in the consent agenda. We can do claims and human service claims and transit claims. I mean, I'm fine with some of those items.
Do you want us to take that first shot on September 5th and put together?
That's fine. I mean, it can, it might be small, but.
It might be.
Consent agenda might be a little.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
And I think committee of the whole, we, we, I think we just call it the working sessions and.
It could be whatever you like, yeah. And, and is, I'm, Commissioner Nelson, if I may, the, is, would, would the suggestion from the board be having a work session at the end of each board meeting? Would that be the suggestion?
I would say it's available. I wouldn't say we're going to do it.[1712.82] I would say it's available. I wouldn't say we're going to do it. We have been doing it with, with the.
Personal policy.
No, I wouldn't, I would commit to it after report.
I, I think, I think that's a little much myself. Usually by the end of the board meeting, we're ready to get, get out of here.
And I think our initial proposal was the idea of having it the Thursday prior to the Tuesday board meeting and having a committee of the whole. And it would allow the board to endorse things, maybe put things on consent, put things on regular agenda, approve things that are coming that have been vetted through committees. And, and then ultimately, a group of five of you are aware of what's being brought to the board. And again, makes the board meetings a little bit more efficient, also gives time for a lot more discussion. But again, it's your decision. We've seen it both ways.
I'm not in favor of it all.
Okay.
I'm not in favor of having a separate meeting for committee of the whole, at all.
No, I, like, Mary mentioned, a couple of work sessions with everybody throughout here is great. But I'd still hate to give up somewhere individual committees.
Yeah.
A little more in depth with things that are happening within the department and probably spread out publicly and a lot of stuff, so.
I agree with that, also. But I like the idea of having a couple of work sessions, too. Do the.
You know, and sometimes if we're going to, in the past, we've done work sessions, we get off this site, too, when we went over to the Greystone. You get in a different atmosphere. Sometimes that helps, a different meeting room, too. Maybe that's something we could, after the meeting, just go over there, you know, go over there to a different setting. And sometimes it just, it.
We've got a lot of other places we can meet now, too.
That library, yeah.
Go over to Highway and.
And the libraries, or not library, museums got some of those nice.
Yeah, yeah. Museum's got a nice meeting room there.
So maybe, maybe go offsite for some of those work sessions, too. It's just a little bit different atmosphere.
Maybe we could get hamburgers.
That's what I was thinking.
I don't know.
Or salad.
I don't know who could do that, though.
Donated.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Thank you for the input, commissioners. And then finally, you just had the Budget 2024. You see the, the timeline here. We're in committee review mode, and some committees have reviewed budgets. I think the one item we need to fill in the blank on, and we'll be discussing it here in the near future, is wages. But we are going through the committee review process. And I think just a real short discussion, I think some of the real positives is a lot of this legislative funding that we've received and how it could help with budget support. We do have some expenses that are going away. We're, we're actually going to be doing our last commitment this year for 2023 for the museum payment. We've used technology funding about a few hundred thousand to assist with that. That was the last payment is this year. So in 2024, we'll be able to use that funding for something else. We still have about $2 million in special general funds. And we're seeing some levy decreases with some of the early departmented numbers. Our plan is to go through the committee process here over the next couple of weeks, get the wages assigned, and then bring you a preliminary budget to review on September 5th, get direction from the board. And then on the 19th, bring a modified budget and with a preliminary maximum levy for the board to approve per state statute. And that's where we're at with budgets.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for Pat? Hey, we'll go on to finance. Before we go on to finance, I wanted to just take a moment and recognize the passing of Lyle Hovland down in Wilken County, Commissioner. He sat on many boards with us. Jerry, you probably remember Lyle. He, I guess, I didn't even know, but he was battling cancer for a while. But just a really good guy and worked hard for, for the counties and was involved in a lot of the, the regional stuff. So we're going to miss Lyle at, at a lot of meetings. So it's a sad day. So moving on with finance.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am requesting a motion to approve regular claims, auditor warrants in over 90 days.
So.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Erica. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Next, I have Resolution 823-2B Marshmallow Animal Shelter for Raffles, September 23rd at pit 611 in Lake Unis Township.
Motion to approve, 2B. I will second.
Motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Looking 9:06, we're, we're well ahead. Christie, you can take your time.
Talk slow.
You know, I know you.
I have one thing.
I know you hate this. When you're, when we're way ahead of schedule, we have time to ask questions and put you on the spot. She really likes to answer board questions. I mean, I know in the past, you've just exceeded expectations and, and, but I do have a list of questions. So go ahead with your topic, and then we'll get to the questions.
Great. So the first thing we have is an amendment to our 2022-24 DHS mobile crisis allocation. It's an additional amount of $146,557.
I did ask some questions yesterday at finance about ongoing requirements on this. And when the, there's going to be an added employee at Willow, and that, that they plan on taking over the expenses when, once the grant is done. And then internally, I can't remember what, what the email said. So could you expand on that?
So there's also going to be additional wages added for the duration of the contract, using that kind of as, it's COVID funds, so using that as a COVID pay during the duration of the contract. And then once that is up, then go back to their.
And there, this is kind of a bonus pay for them. So it's not an on, it won't be an ongoing expense. It won't come back to the county to.
Nope.
To hit us in the budget. And that's, those questions are something that we always want to check. Not that we wouldn't, but we want to be going eyes wide open when we accept these funds that are going to be a one-time fund or short-term. So any other discussion or entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract amendment.
I will second.
Okay. Any discussion? Thank you and Denise for checking into that. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And next, we have claims for Human Services, Public Health, and Transit.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
I will second the motion to approve the claims.
Okay. Any discussion or questions on claims? Because if we want, we have time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, Christie, we did talk about it this morning at open forum.
Yeah.
But I just want to make sure that you pass the message on to the Children and Family Services for the ICWA.
Absolutely.
Audit.
Yep.
And congratulate them.
You know, I bet we look back in our past because we've had 100%, I mean, numerous times. I mean, we, we must be one of the best reporting counties in the state because we, we've got a lot of accolades from the, you know, coming back saying how great, how great the reporting is, so.
And because we start with a B, we're top of the list.
Yeah.
Yep. We're actually number one.
We are number one, yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Christie.
Yeah, we did claims.
You seconded the.
Brian, what do you?
The only reason I seconded is because you didn't beat me to that. Because you had the motion.
Well, we're way ahead of schedule. So, and we have a public hearing at 10.
Break early.
Should we take a break now instead of later?
Yeah, we're welcome. Let's go on break till Steve gets here at least.
Yeah.
10 minutes?
10 minutes.
Mr. Chair.
9:20, we'll come back.
Yeah, probably about fifteen.
All right, well, let's start back up and welcome Steve and Brian.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is so controversial.
Right. And I'm just finding my spot here on my packet, but go ahead, Steve.
Oh, thank you. Good morning, board members.
Morning.
Thank you. We have three items today. Two of them are basically contract concessions for state Department of Correction crew leaders to continue to work in Rebecca County. That's one of them is through the ICWIC program, and one of them is through the state STS program, which, Brian, if you have questions, you can handle some of those, I think. So it'd be resolution oh eight two three two A, oh eight two three two C, and then also capital purchase request to buy a pallet jack. Like I said, these are both contracts that we have in place. The ICWIC crew leader is the guy that runs the crew out at our recycling facility. He works forty hours a week. And the other one, he works twenty hours a week out there and then twenty hours maintaining parks and our works in our rec department. And that's where the funding is going to be for to cover those, so, respectively. So, any questions?
Any questions for any, any comments on the price of recyclables to, are we, no here?
The price of recycling, they tanked earlier last fall. We really had some difficulties getting rid of paper and cardboard because the major cardboard recycler in Minnesota shut down. But we've since recovered and we've found some new buyers and we actually started to move a lot more product again. So we're all caught up. We've moved this stuff through and pricing is starting to come back. Cardboard was down to, I don't even remember, it's like, you give it away practically. And now it's, you know, in the fifties or sixties. Same thing with mixed paper. There's, there's a glut on the market on that, but there's some new participants that have came in. There's a facility down in Wisconsin that started up as a Chinese backed factory. And I think they're buying some, which helps take some of the surplus off the market. The other commodities, actually, the prices are not too bad. Plastic, PET, which is your drink bottles, like your water bottles, that's market was really soft, but it's starting to come back where we can move it through the winter. We had trouble even moving it. But now there's some buyers out there. And the other types, there's been a market for the heavier number twos.
Our Lions Clubs, a couple of guys collect plastic bags and then bring them in and they receive park benches, you know, those recycled material on park benches, like the decking on docks and, and, and so they've gotten, I think they said they donate, collected enough to donate three of them so far.
Oh, great.
And that's, they collect five hundred pounds worth of plastic bags. And so they've done that three times. And so Sunnyside Nursing Home is a beneficiary of one of them and another nursing home down here in Detroit. I can't remember which one. And so.
That's a good program. I'd be interested in knowing who their contact is because we, we get a lot of plastic bags that come through at our, all our drop sites. There's a container there for plastic bags. If they're interested in those and they got a way to get rid of them, you know, for sure we could. Because right now, those just go into the trash.
Yeah. And I wonder, but those are, those are kind of dirty, aren't they? I don't know if that, I don't know if they want.
What it is, is most people, there's people that come in, you know, they throw their recyclables into a Walmart bag or a Menards bag, and then they go there and they put them in their respective containers and that containers for.
Yeah. But I mean, that's what I mean. They have a lot of, you know, pop or residue.
They could.
I mean, that's, I throw mine in there and they're full up. The bottom of the, you know, it's pop, you know, it's just, pop drains down there and you.
Some people are probably cleaning.
Yeah, I just wondered. I never have that problem.
Well, they're garbage bags. I dump my recycling in and the bag is filthy and I.
It's just pop there.
Well, and I don't drink beer, so it's not beer. But anyway, kudos them. And then they, they also do the, the pop top or beer top recycling for the pop tops and bring those in to Ronald McDonald House in Fargo. So I don't, I'm not sure if that really benefits. I, I question the benefit of pop, the pop tops, because if you just bring the whole can with the pop top and you can get cash for them. So I don't know if that's a benefit, but that's how Ronald McDonald collects their, I suppose for quantity or for size, you know, they can store it a lot easier.
Sure.
So Brian, are you supporting this project or?
Yes, on the crew leader STS side, of course. And then I'll also support Terry, my coworker, on the ICWIC side as well, so.
Okay. Again, thanks for the partnership and the, the good working relationships that we have with, with the state on this and your leadership on cost savings that we see coming up. And hopefully next year in budget, I think, I think with the pluses and minuses, we end, will end up seeing positive of fifty, sixty thousand or about fifty thousand next year of benefit to the, to the budget, so.
And I'm hopeful we'll see an uptick a little bit on the crew members that are able to assist Roger and others, not only at the county site here, but within some of the work that Todd's crew leader, Steve Joy, does. Not that, it, it's been a downward trend for crew member involvement. So we're really relying on the expertise of Roger and Steve to continue what they're doing as a benefit to the county in which they exceed their value as to what they, they bring.
I think we, we, while all employees are, you know, doing a great job, but those, those are two guys that are, that are doing things that most people just assume will get done. And they're the ones that are, we're assuming will get done, but thanks to them too.
We're.
If they didn't do their job, we'd hear about it first thing.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we would.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're working behind the scenes right now with lake access, cleanup of lake access, or working with Dave Schatzko, who is the DNR supervisor over those funds. And we're, we're trying to get it so that the DNR chips in for their fair share. And we think we have an angle where they're going to be, start participating a little bit more than that they have in the past, just relying on us to clean up all of the lake accesses within Becker County.
And I think that, that they have gotten some funding options this year now. They've been, you know, in the past, I think their funding's been running shorter and shorter or stretched. But I think they now have some funding that they can pay their, pay their fair share of what, you know, on their, on their state project or on their state property, so.
Yeah. So we'll probably bring that forward sometime soon.
Sure.
I'd imagine.
We'll probably work that through with, with the DNR and then, I suppose, report back to our committees and include it in committee report. And if there is a document that we'd have to work through the county board, you know, obviously we'd bring it forward.
Okay.
So that will assist also.
All right, let's address resolution two A, the ICWIC contract first. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by John, second by Richard. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. And two C, I don't know what happened to two B, oh, two B happened earlier. Two C as the STS contract.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Sorry.
Motion by Erica, second by John to approve resolution zero eight two three two C. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Thanks, Stephen. Steve, you have one more item?
Yep, there's a capital purchase request to purchase an electric pallet jack. It's one of those, we'd use this out at our facility. Right now, we have a manual jack and we've used a forklift at times, but that's migrated over to some of our other facilities. This is some of those things that we should have probably purchased about a while ago.
It's getting to the point where we need two people to jack that up. It's there.
Well, they're hard to push, too.
Yeah. Yeah. And this one has rubberized wheels. So if there's a little bit of gravel, it still can move.
This one, yeah. It, it's a good unit. This is what they use when they come and load pallets into a truck. So it's, this is what we recommend doing. We got price quotes from four different places. And the cheapest was to buy it factory direct and plus they have them installed.
Big Joe.
I didn't look at this, but how high does it get it off the ground? I mean, is it just like few inches?
Yeah, it's not going to bring it, you know, I don't, they had some specs.
No, that's fine. It's just elevating enough to.
Yeah, just to move it.
They did say that these will actually work out in like a gravel parking lot or something.
Oh, really?
It's, it's powerful enough.
Is it, it hasn't, it doesn't have a drive on it, does it? It's just lifting?
No, no, it's.
Well, it's a drive. Yeah, it's, they're, they're actually, the schools got one of these. They're really good.
Okay.
Yeah, let's see if somebody's back.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
So part of the problem I have is that the person I have working out there is not big enough to physically move these around. So it's obviously one of those things.
Well, they can get them on our program.
Well, yeah, I can push it.
Not even push it. He just rests there. Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve the purchase of the pallet jack for fifty six eighty five plus whatever taxes.
From Big Joe.
Hey, we have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second for the amount of fifty six eighty five plus sales tax. Is there any shipping in that one?
That's included in there.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, everyone.
Morning. We did add one thing to your agenda about the amendment.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I have three items today. The first one being a purchase request for TV enclosures at the jail at a cost of four thousand three hundred eighty-two and twelve cents. And this is grant funded.
It's from the twenty thousand dollar.
Yeah. Todd, why don't you explain a little bit where they're going to go?
Yeah, so.
It's no location, basically.
We're going to add some TVs to areas that obviously didn't have any in the areas where it's more of a mental health area. So that's, yeah, that's areas that didn't get covered the first when it was built. So should help ease some anxiety and we're hoping to.
Okay. And that's for, I'm not on my page five, was it five?
Five, five thirty-two inch TV enclosures.
This is just for the enclosures, the TV would be purchased.
Yeah.
Or cheaper enclosure. So I'd make a motion to approve the purchase for forty-three eighty-two twelve cents.
I'll second that motion.
And then we have a motion to approve the purchase of thirty-two inch custom detention TV enclosures for the amount, for five of them, for amount of forty-three eighty-two twelve. That includes shipping. Okay. And these, these are, there's some pretty strict requirements, I believe, for these to be in the enclosure for the inmates. So they meet all specs that, so. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, resolution eight twenty-three two D, is regarding our federal equipment boat and water grant. Each year, we put in our, basically our wish list for this grant. And this year, we are going to ask for a new patrol boat, which would replace our nineteen, or excuse me, two thousand and five patrol boat. And the, the cost of that boat is upwards of ninety thousand. One thing that the, the grant writers appreciate is a matching or not a total match, but a match from the county. And we are asking twenty thousand dollars from the county for this boat. And this will also, or this won't include the, the sale of the boat. We're going to sell the boat, so hoping to get anywhere from ten to seventeen thousand for that boat. So we do, you know, those funds will offset the total cost, so.
Does this, I'm a little bit confused now because I thought the sale of the boat also went into the reduction of the grant request.
No.
So we're just committing twenty thousand and then the sale of the boat will offset our grant, our, our portion of the grant or our portion of.
That's in addition to.
So it'll be the twenty thousand plus whatever.
Plus the sale of the, of the boat.
The boat sales will go towards the ninety thousand.
Correct. Yeah.
And the rest would be covered by grants.
Yes.
I don't know that it reads like that.
Do you have the resolution?
Yeah. It doesn't, it just shows the twenty thousand, right?
Yeah.
I don't see that it says anything about the.
Sale of the boat. So this, this resolution is just for the, the twenty thousand that the county would be committed to.
So then do we need a separate resolution to come forward with us when we sell the boat?
I believe we would at that time.
At that time.
But I, wouldn't you want it in here? We, I mean, I would put it in here. It's like we'd offset the, the sale if authorized, because we need to have them authorize us to sell it because it was purchased with, with grant money.
Correct.
So I would, I mean, I would recommend just including it in this one. Say we estimate the, the sell, sale of the old boat would be ten thousand. So, you know, we would need the match, we need permission to sell it and, and offset the purchase of the new one. I, I think you'd want it all in same grant or in the.
Because this, this is submitted for the grant.
Yes.
I think, yeah.
Yeah. So I would agree you'd probably want.
I think that would help get the grant better, yeah.
Just say we'd offset the purchase request by the sale of the old boat, which we anticipate would be ten thousand. And twenty thousand from the county funds would, we'd also, I mean, I'd put it, I'd put them both in the, in the same grant or in the same resolution to have it clear that, you know, if it's a ninety thousand dollar request that you were actually requesting, or ninety thousand dollar boat, we're requesting sixty then. But that's, that's, I mean, but there's more to it than just this resolution, I know, in the grant application. So I don't know, whatever you, whatever you think is.
Can, can we change it now?
I, you can change it now. We haven't, yeah, we haven't voted on anything.
So I know the boat is upwards of ninety thousand. So again, the only thing that the county, we're asking from the county is twenty thousand plus the sale of the boat.
But I think you should, yeah, if you just want to say, whereas.
County will commit allocating twenty thousand towards.
If the federal.
Plus the sale.
Equipment grant is fully awarded to include the purchase of seaborne patrol boat, the county will commit allocating twenty thousand towards said purchase and, and the proceeds from the sale of the existing boat if authorized to do so, or from the, from the state.
Yeah.
I mean, that.
Yeah.
That should be.
Do you want to prove that estimated value of that boat is?
I'd say estimated value of ten thousand for the.
It's ten to seventeen thousand.
Put ten.
Okay. Well, whatever it sells for, the actual, you could put actual sale value on public auction of the boat, which estimate between ten and fifteen thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Something like that would, however you want it worded is fine, but I, I think it'd sit, it'd sit better if they saw that it would go on here. That we're committing both of them.
So with a motor or? So with a mortar or you just send orders?
With a mortar.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's another thing, we just had to put in a lower unit on the, the current one. So that was quite a cost.
It was almost four thousand, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay. You got that, is that acceptable in the change, just at the end of that sentence to include the sale of the existing boat? However it's worded is fine.
Okay, we will change that.
So when we make the motion, just acknowledge or note to yourself that that last sentence will be added on to that.
Move to approve two D with the addition of the sale of the old boat if, if approved.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. I think it's important too to note that it's if approved because.
Yeah, right.
They have to approve the sale of that boat.
Yeah.
And I think they will on a trade-in value, so it's pretty, okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries.
Okay, and item number three, we were asking to change the twenty, we're going to change out a, one of our K nine squads, which will be making a twenty twenty-three Tahoe into a K nine. The additional cost of that is seven thousand dollars and eleven cents. This is from code four. This is still within our budget, but we're, we're asking is just to change that total amount that was approved earlier. So this is an addition, an addition of seven thousand dollars and eleven cents.
So I think you received an invoice from code four and that showed what the old one cost, and then you received an estimate on what the new one costs, and the difference would be about seven thousand, seven thousand dollars.
This is just the purchase, the equipment, the labor will come later.
Right.
I think if we want to make this amendment, I think we should acknowledge that the labor might, it's pretty insignificant, but it might be a couple hundred dollars or.
Correct.
So include N, labor, and future labor. I probably don't even mention it when, when it's so small of a dollar amount, I mean, that labor is included in the original, so.
And again, we still have about thirty-seven thousand in that line item in our budget, so after this purchase.
I'd move to approve the amendment to the code four purchase to include the K nine for seventeen thousand, whatever it is.
Seventeen.
I'd, I'll second, just, I think we should just mention with an increase of per equipment installation of about seven, seventy, what dollar amount is that?
Seventy thousand.
Seven thousand.
Up to seventy-five hundred dollar increase. With the, okay.
Exactly seven thousand.
But there might be some incident.
There might be.
Labor. Okay, any other questions? Is it, is it seven thousand exactly?
No, it's six thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven cents.
Seven thousand?
Seven thousand, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Did you say up to seventy-five hundred?
Well, I don't think, are you coming back with labor later for all of it?
No, we weren't going to.
Okay, then up to seventy-five hundred will include any possible labor increase, it should be minimal, but. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Todd.
We will have the, public hearing starts at ten o'clock, so we will not open the public hearing until that posted time. We can discuss, at least have a reading of the, or look at the reading of the language that we want to look at for the public. Brian, do you have a copy of the?
I do.
Maybe you could just hand that out to the, to the press and to us of the.
I have one copy, I can go make more.
Yeah, we've got plenty of time, so, we've got, Peggy. Is it, it's, wait, it's in the pack, page sixty-eight.
Changes? Okay, then what's in the.
Page sixty-eight? It's sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight to seventy-one, right?
Yeah. So we're, I think we're good, we.
Yeah, we have it all here.
For the press, we can do that.
You guys have?
Oh, then we're good.
Okay.
Well, I don't have it in.
Or in.
Hebrew.
Well, there was a, I had a joke for you, but I, what was it? No, I gotta remember.
Fun. I would advise against telling any dad jokes.
No, this was, well, it's a bad, it's a bad dad joke, but it's not a bad joke. I can't remember it anyway. There was a joke at our Lions meeting last night that Les told, it took about an hour to get to the punchline, the punchline was terrible, everyone just went, huh. It's funny because it's so dumb, I mean.
Well, there was, there was one night, we talked, we talked about at the human services meeting that Pat really enjoyed, but I don't remember.
Because I didn't understand it.
What, what was it? Why, why did the baby calf have to go to bed? Because it was pasture time?
Yeah, that was.
I needed to explain, I mean, it broke up, so, the other side of Minnesota, but the, but I, it was funny. Yeah, I've been slacking on Lions.
My, when you have kids though, evenings are, I mean, you have practices and games all the time.
Football.
There was a lot of people there last night and a lot of guests, it was a big.
Forgot to bring that one up.
Probably went till like nine thirty.
Table and.
No, we were down to, oh, that's not the resolution, so it doesn't.
Oh, yeah.
No, it is the.
You want to do another break or what would you like to do?
Um, well, is there anything we can do?
Anything to discuss?
We go to what you had suggested with the county attorney.
I don't know, is there anyone wanting to read it? I think it's, I think we probably, I can show a deer picture if anyone wants to see a deer at my place.
Is this?
Look at that thing.
Is this the res, no, this is the.
Horn going down in front of its eye.
That doesn't matter, but I like the Big Joe, big.
I see a deer.
Oh, wow.
Come on, Fred, around now, then.
Wow.
Better shoot that one.
January, before they come over.
Yeah, he's a little three pointer on one side, but the horn comes down, it's only about this long, comes down over his eye. I have so many deer, I, I have a big pumpkin patch, so many deer out there. It's terrible, terrible if you're trying to grow pumpkins. First year I had them grow pumpkins, no deer bothered them at all, they didn't know what they were, I suppose, and once they get a taste for them.
Well, they tell everybody.
I know, they tell all their friends and family.
They do.
It's like a Thanksgiving dinner out there every night, and you can chase them out at one end, they'll go to the other end. They don't care. That's funny. Well, we can't start early, so ten o'clock, we'll reconvene at ten o'clock. Well, we can't start early, so ten o'clock, we'll reconvene at ten o'clock. All right, ten o'clock. We are going to get back in session and we are actually on schedule and we're actually ahead of schedule, so we will go into our of public, um, public meeting for the cannabis ordinance and that we want to reconsider in Becker County. So do we need to open a public hearing? So at ten o'clock, we are going to now make, take a motion to open the, for a public hearing, for a public comment.
So move.
Motion by John.
I'll second.
And second by Erica. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed motion carries. So we are now in a public, public, um, public meeting, public forum. If anyone wishes to comment online or in, in present, we will please be addressed by the board, we'll ask for your comments. Anyone in, uh, in the room wishes to speak first? No one, no one's here to speak for this today. Um, anyone on?
Most of them online, I think, are employees.
Anyone online wishing to speak on the cannabis ordinance? Are we unmuted? Make sure we're unmuted. No one? No one, uh, online? I'll ask again if there's anyone present or online wishing to speak. Um, hearing none. Brian, do we close the meeting now and talk, or do we discuss it in public, in public forum?
Uh, close public comment, but the meeting obviously remains.
Okay. With no public comment, uh, ask one more time if there's anyone online or, or in the room wishing to speak on, in, for the public comment period. If not, entertain a motion to close the public comment meeting and open the, or go back into regular session.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Erica, a second by Dave. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed motion carries. Now, we have in our packet, um, and the example ordinance. Brian, would you, would you, um, say where this came from or give us a little history on this part of this ordinance in front of us?
This is a model ordinance pushed out by the Minnesota Sheriff's Association. Uh, we're also with the, working in conjunction with the Minnesota County Attorneys Association. Um, I've just slightly tailored it to personalize it to Becker County.
Okay, and can you explain what this ordinance to the, can you explain what this would limit in layman's terms, what this would limit, um?
Well, keep in mind, this is all new for the entire state, but the intent, I believe, here would be to prohibit, uh, cannabis smoking in areas, uh, in the public, public forums, areas that could affect, uh, other people essentially, unless you're on your own private property.
So does, this does not include smoking cigarettes, correct? So people could, um, an example would be at the fairgrounds. People could smoke at the fairgrounds, but not smoke cannabis. They could smoke cig- nicotine, can, regular cigarettes, but not cannabis. Is that correct?
I, the fair board doesn't allow smoking on the fairground.
I can't.
Okay, let me, um.
Yeah, pick a better one. But I, I get the gist.
This ordinance is targeted to cannabis, so I guess I can't speak to.
Okay, but it's, it's not a.
I, I cannot, for example, so you can smoke outside of a bar or a restaurant outside, but you cannot smoke cannabis outside because of the, what the, of what the, the stat, the resolution states. So you can't smoke it where alcohol is served, uh, anywhere on the premises, and if you're in a restaurant, you can't smoke it, um, outside of, where you could smoke cigarettes on it, because it's considered a public place that the public could gather at. That's what, I think that was down towards the, that's what I interpreted anyway, when I read it. Does it define what a public place is? I think it's like letter G or something like that.
Letter I is kind of the.
Yeah.
Where you can do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, then letter G define what a public place is, and then it, it took care of all of that.
Correct.
Okay, um, we did have someone just come in late. Do you wish to speak? I mean, we had our open forum and no one wanted to speak, but did you wish, we certainly can.
I wasn't looking to speak, I just wanted some more information.
Okay. Okay. No, absolutely, this is probably, I just want, if you wanted to have some input, you certainly could. Okay. I think the intent then is to, is to, just to not, this is just trying to restrict public usage in, for affecting other people, and, um, is that correct?
Yeah, I think so.
Is that Sheriff Glender, that's our intent as long as, I mean, if we're not going out looking for, for people violating this, but if they're, they're causing harm to others or then, my, my concern is, I prefer not to, if, if you have a family there with kids, you don't want someone. I mean, if you're smoking it, just, you know, people that have common courtesy, I think this, if you go and smoke somewhere not a jo- no, you know, harming other people or not maybe harming, but smoking in their presence away from them is, I don't think you're gonna have.
This does also include lower potency edibles.
Yes, it does.
I just wanted to make that.
I, I think, I think that's going to be pretty difficult to.
Mm-hmm.
Enforce.
I, I, it's gonna be in there, but I don't think there's gonna be a time where Sheriff Glender's gonna.
I'm gonna check that.
Unless, yeah, unless there's, unless there's, unless there's another problem associated with this. I mean, if there's, I think that's the key to this. Usually we're, we want to have something where we're going to be able to, um, remove someone from an area if they're causing a, a problem.
I, I just had one question, um, under, on page three, section four penalty, where it says the, the fine is up to three hundred dollars, is that, is that the same as the city's? Wasn't there's up to one fifty? Yeah. Does that, does that pose any problems, any issues at all?
No.
No, okay.
That's the maximum penalty for a petty misdemeanor in Minnesota, and it says up to, so it could be a big less than.
Yeah, and that'll be up to a judge's discretion.
Yeah.
But I think the intent here is not to try to criminalize people, but it's just, it's, I think, common courtesy is what we're trying to say. Just give common courtesy and, and everything will. Is that correct, Sheriff Glender? We're not looking to find, we're not trying to stop this beha-, you know, it's just those that don't want to, shouldn't have to be around it if they're.
Correct.
Now, if anyone's been to Las Vegas, I mean, it gets, it gets a little, it gets a little, you're walking by it all the time in Vegas, and I, I just don't think we, I think we'd prefer a little bit different environment than that, so. You been to Vegas?
Yeah, not for a long time.
It's, and it's, it's a distinctive smell. I, I've never been.
Happens in Vegas, it is.
Yeah. Keep it in Vegas. But I think this, I think we just want responsible use. I mean, we know it, it gets used all the time and we just. Any comments, anyone? Nope. Any other discussion on this? Any? This is, um, this reading will be just today. It will be addressed again at our not next meeting. Is that correct, Pat? Brian?
Well, I, and if you might, uh, Brian, and I had talked, Kyle wasn't going to be physically here, but he indicated that, um, the board can deliberate if something is passed. It would be, um, brought and published in the paper and also a copy would be brought to the Otter's office, so I don't think you have to do a series of readings like the city's ordinance, um, but you can approve this as it is written.
And then we wouldn't have to do anything at our next board meeting?
Correct.
We just have to publish it. And it hasn't been published already?
No, it has not.
No.
So I'll make a motion to approve ordinance, what is it, twenty one? Ordinance twenty one, the can, uh, regulating the use of cannabis and cannabis derived products in public places.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. And any growing would fall under state law, right? Any private use?
Yeah, this is not targeted towards the production or growth.
Right, but that's, that would fall all under state, state law.
Yep.
So there are some rules and restrictions for that.
Yep.
I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance twenty one as, as presented in your board packet. Any other discussion? Anyone? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed motion carries. All right. Hopefully this will be a smooth transition. Any other? Business?
Just a closed session.
Okay. We, the only thing left on our agenda, we did do the sheriff already, so you, uh, guys have any questions for us, or? We're gonna go for a closed session to discuss, um, negotiations? What is it?
Well, okay, so you've got, uh, public place, you've got listed establishments, food establishment, beverage establishment system, uh, but also as a permitted, under the permitted places where you use an establishment or a permitted, uh, consumption of it is listed under the places where you can use.
Provide.
And then I talked to Charlie Ramsey, and he said, well, an establishment can apply for a permit.
That's, you have to, you have to have a permit, yeah, and we're not there yet, yes. Yeah, because, because it could be in a private place.
Exactly.
And they're ha- but they have to have a permit in order to be at the private place to.
I just thought that, you know, use.
Yeah, I saw that part too. Yeah.
Well, why didn't you ask the question? So we could have maybe done, clarified it a little bit earlier. I think the permit part will be established. If you get a permit, that will, it will be with or without any of that use.
And I don't think that would be a permit, or we would.
A permit for an event, maybe?
Like I say, if the, I guess maybe we would create another, yeah, we don't want to do that.
Brian and Todd, you might want to review if we're permitting it at WeFest.
Can you smoke at WeFest?
Going back to our, our, our trip out to Grand Junction, you know, it's been legal out there for a long time. And honestly, I smelled it less out there than I did out here last year.
Probably.
Smell a lot this year, but.
They're probably chewing it.
But, I mean.
Well, I did talk to someone from Colorado when it first became legal, and they're like, it's legal now, it's, we don't even do it anymore, because you go buy a dispensary at the corner. It's like, it's.
I expected to, you know, kind of be overwhelmed with, but I was very surprised that.
I, I will say Vegas.
You can buy it yet.
I will say in Vegas, it's, it's pretty obvious in Vegas.
They opened dispensaries on.
They closed one.
Well, you got a legal one.
All right, now we'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Could you read that statement there, please, Commissioner?
I got it right here.
Back of what? Oh, I don't get the full package.
Well, I thought you, it was there.
Well, I looked at the back of different things, but anyway. Entertain a motion to close the meeting pursuant to Minnesota statute, uh, section thirteen D oh three subdivision one B. The governing body of public or may by majority vote of, um, in a public meeting decide to hold a closed session to consider strategy for labor negotiations, including negotiation strategies or developments to discuss and review labor negotiations proposals conducted pursuant to section one seventy nine A zero one to one seventy nine A two five. Entertain that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed motion carries. We're now in closed session.